Oh, yeah, is it ready?
I'll get it.
Just, just know, just know. He's good. I'm getting it soon. How long? Hey, I could say that.
Mics are on. Mics are on. All right, I see where the microphones are on and it's four o'clock. I'd like to call this workshop to order, please. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Schlauch, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
It would be an honor, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Hiramba, press it. Councilman DeWitt.
Here.
Councilman Schlauch.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson. Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay, public comment. Now's the time for the public to come up and speak. Hello, Rick.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Mayor, how you doing today?
Doing well.
I spoke with Ann Wright this morning and the explanation as to, not the explanation was good, but understanding how this project for Old Forty-One is being paid for is a little confusing. And especially the part where it says a 5% assumption in the increase in property values where the money coming into the city from the county has doubled in like four or five years. Maybe she can explain that a little better than I, than I could understand it. So it's supposed to be coming in and let's hope everything works out real good. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else from the public like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move along to discussion on downtown financial aspects. And Carl, you want to get us started here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, we've got two items, we've got an hour and a half, less if you actually want a break, to talk about finishing up the financial aspects of the downtown, making sure that we've got as much understanding as we can on that, and then move into a discussion of the budget revenues. And again, we can talk revenues more on the 13th. Your budgets are in front of you, we'll talk about those in a little bit. But anyway, at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Ann and have her start the discussion. Ann?
Thank you, Ann. Do you want me to put you on a timer?
Sure, if you'd like to, that would be fine.
Just checking, just checking.
Ann Wright, Finance Director. What we're going to start with, if it's okay with you, is a PowerPoint that you've been seeing, I guess, for the last two meetings. And it incorporates some items, I think each time I would maybe modify it a little bit based on some questions that I would receive. So let's run through that and then go through specific questions. Also, in this packet is a cash flow projection that does a typical cash flow where it shows the sources of cash coming in and the uses of the cash on an annual basis. So I'd like to review that with you as well. So to begin with, the project itself was budgeted in the FY '15 budget as shown on this slide, and that actually was budgeted $5 million about in FY 2015, 10.9 million for 2016, and in FY 2017, $2.6 million. Now, what has changed since this was prepared, as you know, is that the council did approve a budget amendment to actually move some funds that were on hold into fully funding this project. So as of FY 2016, the project is fully funded based on the project's budget. In other words, the cash is in the bank. We have the cash in the bank from the loan proceeds, and we have cash in the bank from project funding through these years, through this budget allocation, which is a good thing. Next slide shows the total breakdown of the total budget that we have for this project. $1.5 million for design, $15.6 million our guaranteed maximum price contract, and then $1.5 million allocated for underground utilities, and that's how we got to the $18.6 million. Not included in this budget was any property acquisition, so that is separate and that was outside of the scope of this budget.
What about the bridge widening?
The bridge widening, actually, I'm pleased to report that the bridge has gone from over $2 million as originally designed, redesigned, down to $1 million. And so based upon savings and contingency, if we're continuing to be lucky through the balance of the project, the bridge will actually fall under the guaranteed maximum price of 15.6.
So a million less than?
Yes, actually more than that. Yes, sir.
Did you hear that, Fred?
Million four.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Well, originally, the bridge was plus two on top of this, right? And it's down to a million and change, and you're saying there were other efficiencies that may bring it within the 18.6. All right, thank you.
I have a question. Could you just refresh my memory? How, I think originally, the project cost was $16 million, and now we're up to 18. What, is that because the underground utilities was added, or how did you go from 16 to 18?
Okay, great question, thank you. The $16 million number was an estimate based on some preliminary engineering work that had been done by CH, Tohem Hill, at the time. We needed the estimate upfront in order to, so it was actually developed before the real scope of the project got developed. We needed it upfront because it was going to be extremely difficult to get this project funded by the city itself unless we had a partner in the county. And so we needed to give the county an idea as what the number would be. The estimate was $16 million. But that was for a project that had no undergrounding of utilities and was only from Oak Creek to Imperial River. As the project evolved, undergrounding utilities was added, as well as the road segment from the bridge, from the Imperial Bridge all the way up to Terry. So that added actual expense because you have a larger project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
This next slide shows, as of May 25th, the actual expenditures to date, as of that date, against the planned budget of $18.6 million. And we do actually spend the loan proceeds first for reasons that it's restricted cash and we need to spend that for only that purpose. And so that's, all the costs have been applied against the loan. As of this date, then, we had $12.5 million remaining in the budget associated with costs to be incurred for the project. A lot of the information on this slide was reviewed with you when Julie Santa Maria was here, our financial advisor. But these are the terms of the Bank of America Public Preferred Funding Corporation loan that we did obtain on February 14th, 2014. And it has 2.96% interest payable February 1st and August 1st, and the principal payment is due on February 1st annually. Final payment is due February 1st, 2029. Key covenants included in that document, and I think that has been distributed to you. The proceeds will be used only to pay costs of the project and issuance costs. It is collateralized with our half-cent sales tax revenue. We receive about close to $4 million a year on half-cent sales tax. We're not required to use that as a funding source, and we haven't been using it, other than we do transfer money from the general fund, which in essence could be, that's where we record the half-cent. But in the event that we would have an issue with being able to pay, they would have a right to that money that we receive from the state, from the half-cent sales tax. And then Julie mentioned a breakage fee, which makes it not feasible to pay this loan off early. Very interesting calculation and costly, would be costly to the city to prepay it.
Ahead of 2019?
Yes.
I mean, 19 or 29?
2029.
29, thank you.
Next slide shows, just to illustrate the actual calculation, or the way the calculation is done relating to the portion that we receive from the county. I've used estimated downtown area 2016 taxable value, $426,457,000, minus the base year value. That base year never changes. That's always, that was a value as of January 1, 2012, and that stays the same throughout the calculation. So we get the benefit of basically the appreciation of that land, as well as the additional growth and new construction in the capture area. So subtract off the base year, you get your increase in taxable value, multiply that by 85%, and that's a term in our revenue participation agreement, then multiply that by the county millage. Now, two things at risk here. We're at risk related to the growth of value of the real estate property and also the fluctuation, potential fluctuation, if any, in the millage of the county.
The county is talking about reducing its millage.
That's what we understand. So that was the estimated FY 2017 project funding, $543,000, so it's just the calculation, multiplying the millage times that value. The city had, in the agreement, agreed to provide 100% of the city's millage, ad valorem taxes, associated with the same value. So instead of an 85%, we're putting in 100, the taxes associated with 100% of that net increase in value.
Ann?
Yes, ma'am.
Just two questions. It is the case that if the county millage went up, that we would participate in that also?
That's correct.
It goes both, in both directions, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the other thing is, is that we are, in a sense, earmarking the appreciation in the value that is associated with the region around the development. But we would still maintain the base amount of valuation and millage that's associated with that. So for example, if this represents 5% increase, the 5% is earmarked to go to the downtown area, but the other 95% would be, go into our general fund, as it always has. Isn't that the way?
We're still, we're still getting the benefit of that base.
Right, of the base, we still have it. And then later on, when we see some of the other, we are contributing in addition to this, a portion out of the general fund, which is the accumulation of all the millage revenue that comes from all over the city.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, thank you. The cumulative.
Ask a quick question. On this spreadsheet, there are different numbers for county participation. Is there a reason for that?
I did update, I did a little bit of update as more information came in, so I was using, on the spreadsheet, I was using some older numbers.
Okay.
And actually end up being more conservative.
Yeah, no problem, thanks.
Yeah. The actual summary of the funding that we have received for FY '14, '15, and '16 is shown there. The county commitment under our agreement is that they would pay 50% up to $16 million, and so that's $8 million. So initially, when there was discussion about the project, they said we'll pay half of the project up to a maximum project cost of $16 million. And then 50% of the financing costs, and based on our amortization schedule with our current loan, that would be the $1.6 million. So the maximum amount that the county will contribute is the $9,638,738.
And then that's, that's as projected originally, right, Carl? That's the same number when we got started on this?
Well, when we got started, and this kind of goes to Rick's question as well, if I'd like to address that real quick, is that when we were trying to determine the feasibility of this project economically, we did do projections for how long it would take to pay off a certain amount of debt over 25 years. So what we did was, we very conservatively projected a 5% increase in assessed values in the capture area downtown. We have, the first year was 3%, but nothing had happened. Then buildings started going on, we started seeing things happen in the downtown, the economy improved, so land was automatically moving up anyway. Bottom line is, is in years two, three, and four, what the council's going to see is those increases weren't just 5% a year, they ranged between, I believe, 11 and as much as 17%. So we are doing very, very well in terms of seeing the growth that we need to pay this debt down.
Thank you.
Does that help, sir?
It does.
So these numbers are actually better than projected, is what I'm saying.
Right, okay, all right, great, thanks. Greg, go ahead.
Just real quick, Ann, but based on our numbers, we can't pay it off early, though, can we?
No.
Based on what Julie had come in two months ago or a month and a half ago, we can't, we cannot pay it off any earlier than 2029.
There's a significant fee associated with that, yes.
Is that till the full term of the loan, or is it after 10 years, can we pay it off, or is it full term?
Full term.
And that's at 2.99?
2.96.
996, right, okay, thanks.
I mean, you could pay it off, but there's a tremendous make-whole penalty.
But what we could do, if it's accelerated because of the county participation, we could get the full $9 million and change much sooner than expected. That we could set aside some of the money from our fund in a reserve or earmarked fund to pay off the out years. Isn't that, would be a logical way to do that, or?
Certainly.
Because if we get the $9 million upfront, you know, then we don't have to put the general fund money into it, right?
That's correct.
And we still have to put our portion, according to the contract.
I believe the agreement, and I didn't have a chance to talk to Audrey about this, but the contract, the agreement would terminate at the point that they paid in full. And is my interpretation of it, and that would mean that we wouldn't be tied to the calculation that we're currently doing. We still have to pay the debt.
Right.
But we wouldn't be tied to that particular calculation on our ad valorem.
But it might be prudent to anticipate that at some, maybe not right now, but if we're going to get a prepayment and it's going to be good for 10 years, so to speak, that once we see that this is acceleration, rather than not participating at the general fund level, we might want to set aside money to pay off the out years, even a small portion of that. Otherwise, what is the annual requirement on the note? Do you have that?
It's, well, it shows here.
With the principal and interest?
Yeah, or debt, annual debt payments, a little over $1 million.
So we'd have to commit to, in the, you know, the final, let's say, five to seven years, a million dollars. Now, maybe we'd be comfortable just keeping that as part of the budget, or we could allocate it in a different way ahead of it, we can anticipate that. It might be worth exploring what will happen if we continue this good fortune that we have right now.
And I might also just make sure council understands that our debt on this particular project is a 15-year debt. The county is tied to a 25-year payback, okay, to us, or 50%, whichever comes first.
So it may be possible that the 15-year debt and the county participation might be coincident?
It's possible.
It's possible.
It's possible, depending on growth, that the debt would be paid off in 15 years, and the county would still be paying part of their share. It really depends on the growth that continues.
And it is only the growth that we're getting the 85% of. So right now, we're experiencing a good gain because we're kind of bouncing back, but it's going to level off some, you know, we've got to stay conservative. So we might not see that 11% to 17% gain each year going out, so. And if it's only, if it was 0%, you know, we're not going to get anything, so.
But it's, my understanding is it's from the base year, it's not just the growth annually, it's from what the 2000.
That is, that is correct. So for example, let's just take this year.
Right.
If the growth was zero, all right, you would still get $500,000.
Right, so it does.
Because it's against the base year.
So once you get ahead of the game and you don't go too far back, you're still going to get that accelerated payment vis-à-vis our projections, which were more conservative. That's correct.
Yes, yes. I did have two council members ask me about the cash flow related to the construction period, so that's being presented here. So this is showing the sources of cash to fund the project through the construction period, which is through September 30, 2017, and the cash demands or the cash requirements during that period of time. So the remaining, as of this date, May 25th, the remaining costs to fund the project are the $12.5 million, and then debt service payments, 1.248. And that's tied to the way the interest and principal falls during that period of time. And also was asked, and then what are the cash requirements? So this is looking at it, looking at it in total after the construction period and the projected sources of paying for those debt service costs. So the remaining debt service costs after September 30, 2017, are the $12.8 million. And then the sources are shown there, with the county funding being 67%, 8.7 million, and then the city coming from the various sources, gas tax, general fund, and ad valorem.
And that'll be, Ann, in our general fund, $1,002,000 over 11 years?
That's correct, over that remaining period.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was looking at that right, okay. Pretty good, thank you.
Then this is a cash flow projection showing how the debt service would be paid, and again, using those assumptions, and again, the county amount, the ad valorem amount, we already know we've received more than that, but I had done this previously before we actually had received our current year's payment from the county. But also, in conjunction with that, if you could look at the spreadsheet that does the cash flow that was in the packet, and that does show, if you look across the line for the county participation, the dollar amounts related to a point in time, and again, this is based on a 5% increase in the taxable value, and it ends up generating more revenue because we are actually getting not just a 5% increase, not just the, we're not, we're getting the revenue not just on an increase of 5% in taxable value, but on the full amount above the base year value. And so that's showing that in FY 2023, according to the projection, would be, and just a small amount, we would still need to transfer into the debt service fund from the general fund and the gas tax fund. After that, it looks like the ad valorem taxes and the county participation would cover the amount.
Ann, am I reading this correctly, that when you look at totals through FY 2025, the county's still at $7 million, so we'd have another million to come in 2026?
Yes, to get to.
Or we got another million on the table, per se.
Two million, two million.
I was going to say, yeah, '26, '27, '28, '29 would get us to the $9 million, right?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Good to go.
That's all you have.
That's all I have.
I had a few, I had a few.
Yeah, Pete, why don't you get us started off?
Well, I think we, I just, I had a few comments, and I want to talk about Slide eight, page eight, the cash flows. And let me preface this by saying, we all personally, downtown project is a fantastic project. What I'm trying to get at is the strain that it's putting on our current cash flow strain, it's putting on our present budget. That's not a wrong or a right, it's just a fact, all right? So let me just make one or two points and then go to page eight. The first is on, and by the way, thanks for doing this for the fourth time, not to mention the times you and I have been back and forth on it, so thank you. So on this long sheet, just want to make a point about something, which is, we continually hear that Lee County is half partners with us, okay? That's a true statement, but I think you have to go to the next sentence, which is, the vast majority of that money is coming in in the next decade. So if you look at the projected amounts on the Lee County participation, you'll see that, you know, whoever, in my view, whoever is sitting here five, eight years from now is absolutely in fat city because of that Lee County participation. But if you take a look at the first four years, and I know it's been adjusted up a little bit, okay? You take the 30,000, the 164, the 346, and the 412, that doesn't add up to $1 million, all right? So the project, whether it's '18, '19, '20, '16, is something in a range of $20 million. And the participation we're getting from Lee County through the rest of next year is a million and change. So it's not half. So it's, the money is coming in in the next decade. I think it's important to understand that, because I think some people think they're paying dollar for dollar right now. Those dollars are coming in next decade, all right? They may come in slightly faster, but that's when they're coming in. It's all a good thing, but as it relates to our current cash flow, it's small, to put it politely, compared to what we're spending right now, right? Next year, we're going to spend something like 13 million bucks or whatever. So if you go to your Slide eight, if you can put that up, or it's Page eight, Ann, the cash flows. There's one other point, if you bear with me, and it's about the debt, and Ann and I have been back and forth on this. And this is all getting to a point of how much cash is coming out of our budget over and on top of what Lee County is giving us and what the debt is giving us. All right, so the debt was $13 million. We've spent to date $6,45,000 through, that's not on this page, but that's what we spent, all right? We've also already paid back $1,004,000. Now, you're showing unspent debt proceeds. That's a correct statement, that's what you have under the contract, remaining debt proceeds. But the principal amount of the debt remaining is $5,505,000, correct? After payment of.
If you deducted a payment of debt service payment.
Right, 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 right. So what's happened is, $1,004,000, that's $6,905,000, has come out of other cash in the city to pay back that debt. So we're showing 6,900,000, but not, Ann's technical accounting is correct, okay? I'm with you on that. But from an analytical point of view, it's $6,905,000, as we stand here today, $6,905,000 minus $1,004,000 that's already been paid back. That's functionally what's available to us. I know you have the money sitting in a bank account that says debt proceeds on it, but we paid back $1,004,000 of that, all right? So the long and short of this is, if you take, and just check me on this, Ann, if you take that and bear with me on the $1,004,000, okay? This basically is showing that what's coming out of city cash, including that $1,004,000, is $7.5 million from now through the end of the next fiscal year. Fair statement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On top of that, and that's good about the bridge, but on top of that, it's whatever we have to spend for the roundabout taking, if any, all right? So I just want to make that point, that's all. In other words, that's, that's $7.5 million in cash, so if you go back to last year's budget, you'll see in the projected one year out, and you don't have this with you, Ann, I don't think, but I think you recognize the number, the projected one year out general fund number was $922,000 after the money set aside for hurricanes, et cetera. That, to me, is a symptom of the pressure this project is putting on our cash flow. It's not to say it's not a good project, but it is to say, realistically, we have to understand what the project is doing in terms of strain on the city budget. And I think another symptom of that is, you know, we sat here two months ago, whenever it was, going through all those budget items, moving them out into the future, conversations we had about that, and last meeting, you came in and said, hey, look, I want to take $2,606,000, I think is what they added up to, of that money that we quote-unquote "found", and put that into the Old Forty-One project. That's my only point. So, I mean, now, where we are depends on what we start to see next week. So, I mean, now, where we are depends on what we start to see next week. In other words, how much additional cash is available, what cash comes in. But I think we're kidding ourselves if we don't think the old 41 project has a massive cash flow impact. It's a good project, but it has a massive cash flow impact. And I think the question going forward is gonna be, with everything else we want to do, how does that factor in? So, that's all.
May I just, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, okay?
Right.
Let me summarize this. I mean, this, the county was gonna participate at the 50% level, all right? So whatever the total amount was, you know, we were gonna pay 50% plus a little more because we made adjustments, all right? And what you're saying is that the cash flow is geared to the city participating on the heavy side in the early years rather than the late side, the end. So my view is, is we've already, we could, we've already gone through the process of being constrained, especially since we just allocated the last 2 million, whatever, the last things. And that is for fiscal year, what year are we in?
She moved it into last year.
Seventeen, all right. So we've already, that, we're taking the last, what I, what looks to me like the large, what I call the large hit. So we have to be looking beyond fiscal year 17 to be too constrained along the lines that you're suggesting. Now, I could be wrong, but that's the way I see these numbers.
What was your last point, past?
Well, the big hit to the constraint is already, has already occurred in fiscal year 17, which we've already allocated the funds. So we can't do much in fiscal year 17. Beyond fiscal year 17, it gets a little lighter, and you can just look at the numbers and see that that's the case.
It's, I think there's a difference between accrual accounting, which is what she's doing with respect to this, and cash flow. I think the cash flow constraint, I know the cash flow constraint is right now. How big it is, we don't know, because we have wait to see what the whole budget's gonna look like.
Well, I think we're gonna have a constraint next year.
Yeah.
But I thought you were looking at this more long-term, beyond next year. Do you think it's beyond?
No, no, I'm sorry, then I misspoke.
All right, if we're talking about fiscal years 17.
Coming up.
I agree with it, you just can look at these numbers and know that that's gonna be a problem.
Right.
You know, you don't have to look beyond there.
Right.
You can look at the 2 million that we already, you know, and that's gonna be it.
Fred?
Well, I would piggyback on what Councilman O'Flynn has said. The other thing that we've glossed over here is that to launch the project, there was a kind of skimming off any of the loose chains the city had in the current fiscal year. I mean, they, there was money transferred out of all kind of places already before the money that we just transferred in. So it just simply means that we don't have as much in the cupboards that we normally do going into the year, and we have a lot of things to do. I think, I think that's the other part of the coin. We can't change it, it's reality. And the other thing that we have to deal with, and I'll bring it up now, I don't know that we have to resolve it, but we've got a project with lots of pavers and we have no spares. And not to acquire those spares now when you can get them is, in my mind, not a good solution because it'll just lead to an ugly-looking project three or four years down the road. And then it could also be, the other question I had was about accessories. You want to make sure we have plenty of these accessories and spares of those because waste baskets, recycled containers will either get damaged, disappear, whatever, through time. I think, I think if, with all the money and efforts been put in the project, we want to have it finish up right. And I believe that we have concluded we are making those sidewalks cantilever out to pick up that extra one and a half foot. But we want to make sure we have, that we do do that. We don't want to cut back on some things just to pinch it in under budget.
And what were those pavers? Were they 40,000? I'm trying to remember what the number was.
We don't, we don't have a number.
We don't have a number?
I don't believe so.
Could we make a note of that, Matt Feeney?
Yeah, I suggested he get a.
Yeah, yeah, there he is, look at.
A figure for 5% and 10% overage.
Sure.
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. We, we do have a number. We are, as the city, are direct purchasing those materials to save in tax savings, which is part of the, helps the project. But as a general rule of thumb, there's four types of pavers that are going into the project. A total 10% stock, if we were to purchase that, is somewhere on the order of about $23,000 in addition. I don't know that 10% is really, it might be a little over for what we would need in day-to-day maintenance. But to give you an order of magnitude of what that expense that Councilman Forbes is speaking of, it's.
The more you have, the longer you can go before you have to take them all up to put them down with new stuff that looks the same. 23 grand is a bargain.
So even, you know, and I.
Even if we put another 23 or 50 in accessories, we're good.
Yeah, no, I get it, and I, you know, I did the same thing. We put a roof on our house a couple of years ago, and we bought some extra pavers. But we're talking about construction grade or slightly above construction grade, whatever you want to call it, pavers. Do they go out of print, so to speak?
Pavers go out, they read, they change designs, they change dilots, edge treatments, all kind of things regularly, so you do not want to not get spares.
Carl, come to our aid here. You gonna get pavers?
Tell Fred what he wants to hear.
I think, I think we, I mean, if you're asking what we, we think that it makes sense to buy some spares.
Right.
We're not in agreement, perhaps, that 10%, maybe 5% or 7% is closer to what's needed. And we have not even done the work on the additional street accessories, like benches and things like that. But this is, this number's just for pavers. So if you went 5%, you'd be looking at, you know, what, $12,000, something like that?
I think it's a fair point.
And then a place to store them, by the way.
Can we get a nod of heads? Do we think that's a fair?
Have a place to store them, or you don't?
Matt Feeney's garage.
Did you volunteer that? Good for you. We do have.
Fred's garage.
Yeah, Fred's garage, even better.
How about Fire Station 4?
Yeah, exactly.
Joe's gonna love that.
Let's go with the nod of the heads.
The nod of the heads, yeah.
You can't vote on anything, can you?
We, I know, but just, we're in agreement, whether it's 5% or 7% or 8.3% will get to where we.
We could give direction to staff to figure out a reasonable response here.
There is an area in the east of the city that Public Works maintains that we could store those. They would be open, outdoor storage, but yes.
And we'll hold you accountable, Matt, for the percentage that we need.
Think anybody would take it?
Fair enough.
Is it a controlled environment or what?
All right, fair enough. Thank you, Fred, for making that point. Pete, you have something else?
No, I'm just wondering, unless we're, are we through? We can go to the next sheet.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Carl, go ahead.
I really want to follow up on the discussion, I'm sorry, Anne.
And this may have been what you and I talked a little bit yesterday, Carl, and I don't know if that's where you're going, but.
Well, but I've got to be careful about how far I go with that.
All right, all right, fine.
Okay, just because we don't know the real number. But let me just say this. The points that are made with regards to the cash flow are valid. And I will give you just an example at a high level, okay? Not getting into the weeds, but at a very high level. One of the things I like about finance is that your numbers kind of cross-check, okay? If you're doing them right, they kind of come back to the same numbers. So when you take a look at what we have spent, the project is probably going to end up in the 19 to 20 range. We're ballparking that, okay? We borrowed 13, all right? At a very high level, all right, that's 6 or 7 million dollars. That's coming out of our reserves, all right, in order to make the downtown project work the right way the first time. Plus, interest payments on the debt. We could have borrowed more money. We could have borrowed more than 13 million. But then you are absolutely committed to 15 years of those increased debt service payments. It made more sense for staff to recommend, let's, let's do more of the other funds, let's not get so deeply into debt, because you're absolutely committed. If the council at any point in time said, you know what, we're spending too much money, let's not do this part of a project, you could pull that back. And so it kind of gave the city more flexibility. But the fact of the matter is that this is a 6 or 7 million dollar number at a high level that is hitting monies that we had reserved, all right? Now, this is a project the council chose to spend those funds on. Now, I will also tell you that over the last several years, and I'd say within the last maybe three years, we also paid $5 million or so for to complete the Shangri-La Road. So there's been a number of large projects that the city council wanted to get completed. We didn't borrow money for all of that. So the bottom line is, is that in fact, yes, you've got a cash flow squeeze right now to be expected because of what we've trying to accomplish in what is now a very short period of time. So I just want to make you all aware that the concern is real, all right? We're not broke, let's be clear. But we certainly need to be careful and find other opportunities for us to continue funding the projects the council wants to fund.
Could I ask a question of Anne? At the presentation that the financial consultant made to us, she listed off some things that we could do that wouldn't work, but she listed off a three or four things that would work where we could either borrow more money or redo some things. And I, I thought that we kind of said we'd like to see her pursue some of those.
Right.
Is anything going on on that?
What we need is information about the uses of, of the amount that we may borrow or restructure our debt for. So until we have that information of the, of the actual needs, the cash flow needs, we haven't, we don't have the information to go forward with it.
So then that could be an output of the budget workshop or that process?
A lot of it is gonna depend on the results of the studies that are going on right now with the quadrant plan and also the visioning, to know what type of dollars we're talking about and, and the timing of those, the needs for those dollars. And if there could potentially be some funding partners associated with those. So as we get closer to knowing more about the description of the project and the timeline, then, then we can pursue those options. But any additional debt, of course, we need to identify revenue strain to service that debt, to pay it back.
Well, the notion I remember talking about, I thought, I don't know if consensus is the right word, but we weren't necessarily talking about additional debt, we're talking about stretching out maturities.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And it would free up about a million dollars.
So that could be prudent in any event. I'm not saying it's a light step to take. But if you're stretching out maturities, you're not applying as against new projects, you're just stretching out maturities, because we have, I was looking at the CAFR, and we've got, in, in, I think it's in four or five years, 18 million dollars in maturity. That's right now. That's another cash flow constraint. And then it drops off like a cliff.
Right.
So I don't know why we'd be waiting to think about, I actually thought we were going to progress thinking about, not to do, but to thinking about stretching out those maturities and then understanding what the cost is. The cost may not make sense.
Right.
But you don't have the make-whole provision on the debt on Imperial Parkway, right?
Right.
Carl, you mentioned about that we're not broke, but would you say that the caution flag is waving?
I think we have to be prudent with regards to how we proceed in terms of structuring additional revenue sources and/or debt in order to accomplish some of the things the council wants to do. If we were at static, we would be fine, but we're not at static. And I know this council doesn't want to be static. So I just think, I think there's opportunities, but we're going to probably need to pursue some strategies that will assist us in continuing to move forward in a prudent way financially. Does that help?
Yep. Want to go to the next sheet?
Yeah, why don't we move along then, if everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay.
The next item deals with a discussion of revenue options. And so this is a bit of a brainstorming of different sources for funding. And as already mentioned, we did have the presentation by the financial advisor about option strategies for, from a debt standpoint. And she had identified that the downtown debt was not feasible to restructure that, but the, the road debt, the 2011 road debt, we did have an opportunity there. And that comes up this October is the point where we would be able to refinance that without any penalty. So, so we really can't take any action until that timeframe. From a standpoint of, of moving forward with it, but certainly we can plan and do projections and get information. Also, there, once we know the scope of these projects, potentially pursuing funding partners. And our financial advisor also did mention a state infrastructure bank that perhaps could be a source of some borrowing that, that may be cost-effective for us. Also, we had talked about the different fees and rates, and there is an updated schedule that was included in your packet that added other jurisdictions in, in the southwest area of Florida. And that would be something to consider. I do want to point out, and it is on the green sheet, that we did contact the Department of Revenue, and if there would be an interest in increasing the communication services tax, we do have a timeline with taking action on that. And we would have to have an ordinance to the Department of Revenue by September 1st in order to enact a change in that service tax, communication service tax that would be effective January 1. So that is something that I did want to bring up today, just for, for your consideration, whether or not that is something that you would like at, perhaps at a council meeting to direct staff to move forward or have further discussion on that.
So just to understand this, not to say we're gonna do it, but just to understand it. So take the communication services tax. What I'm seeing on the bottom, Anne, help me if I'm reading this wrong. If the rate increased, so we're way below unincorporated Lee, well, we're below incorporated Lee, right? We're at 1.82. Unincorporated Lee is 3.61, Astero is 3.61. We're way below Fort Myers, Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach, Sanibel, they're at 5.22, all right? So this illustration is not to bring us anywhere near, as I read it, Fort Myers Beach, Cape Coral, or Fort Myers Beach. The illustration, just for understanding purposes, all right, is to bring us even with Astero and unincorporated Lee?
I was just mostly looking at the unincorporated Lee, but.
Right, but Astero's the same.
Right.
So, so that says, once again, not suggesting we do it, but just to understand it. It says, if we were to go, become even with Astero, even with unincorporated Lee, that would give us $732,000.
That's correct.
Or 32, yeah. And then on the electric fee, you're saying, where are we?
We're at 3%.
We're at, we're at 3.
And unincorporated Lee is 4.5.
11, oh, okay, I'm sorry. So we're at 3. So once again, you're talking about parity with Astero, parity with unincorporated Lee, but nowhere near Fort Myers. And that would give us basically almost a million dollars a year, 946,000.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to understand it.
Okay. Another option that we'd like to have discussion with you on next week, July 13th meeting, when we're focusing on the budget, may be we want to brief you on some real estate that the city does own that potentially, if there's an interest that there, some of that real estate could be sold. Would that certainly take an effort to, to research the values and, and to move forward with that? So those were the different funding options, and again, the, the rates are before you. If there's any further information that you'd like on them or any calculations that you'd like to see?
No, and when this comes back and we see this again, we'll have this same discussion, right? This won't be rolled into some big jumbo package that our eyes glaze over and.
No, no.
Just making sure.
Like that budget copy you got tonight?
Yeah, right. Don't try to sneak it in anywhere, Anne, I know you won't, I know you won't.
Oh, no, 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 no. It will be formal action by the council.
Absolutely, thank you. Fred, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask if Anne and/or Carl could talk with Audrey and see that if we elected to do any of those, if we could create a sunset in them to where it's clear that we're doing this to help. that we're doing this to help pay down debt now, but it's not a permanent deal. If I was to vote for it, that would be my front. I'm not saying I would, but I would like to see a sunset, not a forever.
The, the only other thing though is, you know, yeah, it's a tax on the franchise electric, but it's, they're corporations, they're businesses, they pass that all along to,
That's right.
You know, the end user. So, I mean, if we change any of these, it's going to have a direct effect on, on all the people, so.
It didn't say I would vote for it.
I mean, raising taxes is raising taxes and...
But I, the only way I would do it is it has to have a sunset. But we do need to get out of the financial difficult, and we're not broke, but we're very constrained on being able to do things.
I, I think I would like to get a presentation by staff of, of directly focusing on this cash flow issue. And I also think we need to get a handle on what potential expenditures are in regard to the projects that we're looking at, like the quadrant and anything else. I mean, I don't even, I have no idea what we're talking about over what period of time. So, I think it's really hard to look at the revenue side without understanding what we're paying for and under what circumstance. I know it's sort of the cart before the horse, what comes first? You know, do you look at a project if you have money or do you do with pro... My view, if we really have a project that we're committed to, I'd much rather just borrow to do that and have it upfront and have everybody pay for it. And I agree with, with Mike Gibson. I mean, taxes are taxes where it comes from. It's, it's a lot easier to put it in this area because other than when it's reported in the papers, you know, people are not going to pay attention to it and they're going to blame the, they're going to blame, you know, the, the electric company and, and the, you know, the communication people.
No, they're going to blame all of us, Amy. Not the power company or the electric company.
Maybe initially, but not after a while, they're just going to blame, I mean, basically it's not going to be as hot button an issue as if we raise taxes. It's, that's my view and I could be wrong. But personally, I think it'd be better if we had it, we're, we're operating in the dark here, you know? So, we need to get a handle on some of these things, and I think we have a commitment to the quadrant. So, as soon as we could get some guesstimate from whomever we have hired or our staff to, to tell us, the earth, these are things that we can do, it's going to take us 10 years to do them, or it's going to take two years to do that one part of the contra, quadrant, and it's going to cost X amount of money, and we're not going to need fiscal year 2017 because there's no, we're going to get it together by then. I mean, that's what I expect to hear from you, you, the staff, so that we can focus on that. Because even this constraint that we're talking about, it's going to ease over time, you know? And, and, and I think we can focus on alternative funds like the gas tax, what, what we could anticipate there. So, maybe it'll, it won't be as bad as we think. And that we can use those kinds of special service revenues for our projects, we don't have to worry so much about this. But I would rather be, my personal, I'd rather be upfront on what we're doing and what we're spending. And if the council really feels strongly about particular projects, we either do it through the regular funding, budgeting, or we, we borrow for it if we can't. I mean, that's, I don't want to do that either, but we should do it more forthrightly, in my opinion.
Fred, Steve, do you have any? I'm sorry.
Okay, just respond to the councilwoman. In, in that budget book, in one of the earlier tabs, it says, it refers to a...
This one?
A, a five-year financial plan.
Right.
And those are five-year projections for the general fund, the, each of the impact fee funds and all, all the funds. But th- those particular funds are broken out separate. And it does incorporate, it links into other information within the budget document, which includes the, our 10-year capital plan. So, it incorporates what's in the CIP, plans being presented to council to, that would be using resources of the general fund and those, and the impact fee funds during that five-year period. It's linked to our debt amortization schedules as to what we would, are projected to have to use resource-wise to pay back the debt. The thing that it doesn't have, and it's, it's throughout the document, this is, and I, I'll tell you this again, that we do not have built into that CIP those full costs of these projects, the, the quadrant project and the Benita Beach visioning, because we don't have that information yet.
We don't know what it is.
So, but you, at least we'll see the numbers before consideration of, of those two large projects.
What about the projects that we put on hold or whatever you want to call? How are they treated?
If, I, I think in all cases, they're, they're not, basically, they're not funded, they're still on hold.
They're, they're in the CIP, so we don't lose track of them.
Right.
But they are not funded.
So, then we'll doubt.
Yes, so when we do this...
Well, they're still in this, they're still on the list. You'll see them in the list, they are not funded, but it will be council's decision as to whether they want to fund them again.
So, when...
And when.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No. So, when we can get some kind of a ballpark estimate of some of these important projects that I think we already have agreed we want to pursue, we have to incorporate that. And that was my question too, about these things that we put on hold. We, we have to look at it as a total picture, and we could decide to do them or not do them. And it, and that, that way, if we decide to do them, then these, the quadrant, for example, would be an add-on to the, the demands on our revenue. It'll be an additional expenditure. But I, I think we need to work on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, go ahead, Carl.
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Forbes.
Yes, please.
In the absence of the city attorney, I'll give you a legal opinion. No, I, I just want to let you know that our understanding is with regards to should the council decide to go forward with any adjustment in the communication services tax or the electric franchise fee, that those can be done, they can be sunsetted at any time. It is basically the council sending the signal through an ordinance to the collection agency, which is going to be either with, you know, Florida Power and Light or your, your phone provider to adjust the fee one way or the other. So, yes, you can, you can make a commitment to sunset it, and then when that year hits, then the council takes another action to, to reduce it.
One question, Ann, on that projection that you said you've got for, I think it's five years, do we actually, do we show like a projected increase in salaries and benefits and so on?
Yes, sir.
By fiscal year or no?
Yes, yes, sir, and that, that's documented in the assumptions.
Good.
Carl?
Any other questions about this? All right, count...
Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind. What we'd like to do, if council wants us to, is that we've got a few minutes left, and if we could take maybe 10 or 15 minutes, because we're presenting the budget officially tonight to you, we're not going to make a big deal about it, except that as you review this document, what we'd like to do is just go over a few of the upfront summary forms, kind of show you how to read those things. I know they can look a little busy and daunting at times, but we'd like to briefly go through those things so you can see how to read those things.
Ann does that on purpose, just for my benefit.
Easily. Okay. One of the mayor's favorite things. So, that while you're reviewing this over the next week in preparation for our 13th, July 13th workshop, that, that it brings some sense to it. So, if council's, if it's council's pleasure, we will go ahead and take a run at that.
Does that work for everybody?
Everybody okay?
Okay.
10 or 15 minutes and we're done?
Sure.
Okay, Ann?
Yeah, why don't we, we'll run up to 5:20.
Are we supposed to be doing homework on this? Is this what you're saying? This is our homework here?
Well, you can, you can review the budget as much or as little as you want before now and next Wednesday. How about that?
Why don't we run up till 5:20? Then we'll take a 10-minute break and we'll start promptly at 5:30, okay?
Okay.
All right, great.
Sure. So, tab that says the July budget meeting, that does have the agenda. And I would like to just point out about the agenda, item eight. And item eight says establish the proposed operating and ad valorem millage rate for 2016 tax year. This is a, a vote that needs to be taken at this meeting, but the intent of the vote is to provide a millage rate that will be used within the trim notices. So, in all the training sessions that the Department of Revenue holds, they caution us to make sure that whatever submitted at this time is definitely a rate that you will not intend to go over. So, in other words, what would be a maximum rate, it, it certainly, it can go down, it can go lower, but it, it can't go higher because the trim notices will go out. I, I say that it can't go, go higher, but if it were to go higher, then the city would be responsible for rescinding all additional trim notices if there would be a decision over the, the rate that we put in the initial trim notice that was sent out by the property appraisers office changed. But it's okay to go down. So, so I wanted you to be aware of that coming into, to next week's meeting. It's, it's a vote to set a millage that will be used in the trim notice, but you can, it's, it's not the final vote on the millage.
20th, not on the 13th, correct?
It's on the 13th.
13.
You can have a, it's a work, budget workshop, you can set a...
It's not a budget workshop, it's a council meeting on the budget.
This is a special budget meeting, so you will be able to vote.
Okay.
Okay? I used, I mistakenly used workshop. Now, I, for the new council members, let me just explain how this typically works. So, we'll typically bring the paperwork forward on this millage at the current millage you have set. All right? So, again, if you set that rate in this first vote, again, when you take the final vote later, you can always go below that. So, it's not like you get to sit around and just pick a rate, we don't ask you to do that. We start off with the rate we're at, and then council can decide where you want to go from there.
And Carl, I might just add, if we stay with the same rate as last year, and then obviously based on property values, where, where we're increasing.
That's correct. You're increasing taxes.
You're increasing taxes.
And that's clearly stated.
I just want everybody to hear that.
That's clearly stated on the trim notices.
But, but it's safe to use that same one because we're, we're most likely going to be below that, but if we keep it, we're, what's the, I forgot what you said the growth was, is, was it 8% in the value?
It was, it was actually 10.
Excuse me?
It was actually 10.
Highest in the county, I might add.
I'm sorry, well, whatever, 10%. So, so if we left it at the same, everybody would get a 10% increase roughly in their tax bill from us.
Average.
On average.
On average, yeah.
Right, so around 10%.
Fred, go ahead.
Well, there's, there's a little misnomer here, I think. We've had a tremendous amount of new construction.
Right.
And that's new revenue that contributes to this
Yep.
increase of the ad valorem over what it was last year. The real rate that, that somebody's tax bill might go up if you didn't roll it back might only be 3% or 4%.
Right, but do we have a, an understanding of what existing, the increase in the value on existing properties versus what Fred just said? Do we have any idea about that?
We, they did provide the new construction value.
All right, so like...
So, we'd be able to provide that.
All right, so like, what do you think for the existing properties?
It's, it's something I'll take a look at before next week's meeting.
But could you, when you come to the meeting, could you have a rollback for that if you deduct a new construction out, which will be a lesser number?
I can, I, I, I can easily do the rollback, the regular rollback, but I, I certainly will, will do that as well.
Yeah.
Actually, if you can give us the number Amy asked before the meeting, that'd be good.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Then we, we do have a table contents that's behind the agenda and...
There you go, Amy, for your, for your convenience.
So, we could follow that.
Then, then that next tab is the five-year financial plan. So, these are the financial projections for the general fund, the impact fee funds individually, and then the debt service and grants and building permits are all combined there with the disclosure of the assumptions beside each. We have a city manager memo that's behind the next tab, and that does give you a large overview. The next tab is the summary tab, and that's what Carl was referencing. The thing with the summary, these budget highlights or summary, we don't usually look at all our funds all added together. And so, these numbers do look large, larger than what we normally are used to seeing. But at the top of page 23, it does show a breakdown by fund. At the bottom of page 23, it's the total of all the revenue streams all added together. And page 24 does a similar highlights, again, combining all of our activity together. My favorite page in the book is page 25. This was a page that was unbeknownst to me, designed in a previous year by our city manager. And it does do a really great job of, 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 I think, an overview. And that's not because he's my boss, that it was real, I told him, through the whole budget process, I go back to this schedule to make sure that everything's tied in.
He got tired of listening to me, I wore him down.
And it does take each of the individual funds, it shows the beginning fund balance, and this is a projected number, October 1, 2016. And when I say beginning fund balance, that is fund balance that would be available. We have other fund balance that is restricted in nature. And the council members that were here last year during the budget process, we dealt with, we have a, a cash flow restriction related to the loan that was made to the, the Anita Wonder Gardens because it's cash that left the city that we don't have access to. It's a loan, we'll get it back, it's an asset, but it's not fund balance that we can use because the cash went, is no longer in our bank account. So, those types of items are adjusted to get to our fund balance, projected fund balance that we're starting with. We have operating reserves within the general fund, operating and disaster reserves of 5.1 million. Revenues, transfers to other funds, gives us our total sources, and then our expenditures, transfers to other funds, allocation again of maintaining our reserves at that 5.1 million dollar level to show you projected ending fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2017, which is what that should say up there.
So, Ann, you went through this, but just for clarity again, so the road impact fee number is net of the Wonder Gardens loan?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it's net of $2 million because we will be getting a million dollars, we already got 500,000.
Right.
We will be getting a million dollars in FY 2017, so that is a source of cash that will be available during our fiscal year 17.
So, that, the 3,800, is, is in there? The, the million is in there?
The million is in that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, didn't, didn't mean to go over that, any particular schedule and detail, but I, it's just, I found that helpful and I just wanted to share that. Page 20, 26 does do a summary of all those funds, and you can see how you end up with the larger numbers in the, in the main highlights. Then we get into the real detail part of the budget book, and starting with the general fund, we have a summary, we have a lot of information, graphs that show some history on our revenues. And then new this year, starting on page 36, is information about our, each of our, basically each of our departments grouped based on levels of responsibility. For instance, each director, all the departments related to, many of the directors have multiple departments, so all their departments would be grouped together. General administration includes the city council, the boards committees, city manager, and the public safety costs. In these summaries, we have the service statement, the goals, initiatives that were considered in developing this budget, and then a budget summary for the department, and then you continue on to see all the detail, starting on page 39. So, you see every single account, the actual amount spent in FY 15, the original budget for FY 16, the amended budget for FY 16, and then the requested budget for FY 17. So, so it goes from detail up to summary, and you'll see that for each of the departments.
Mr. Mike? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, Carl, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
No, go right ahead.
So, I just want to talk to you about some of these pages because, you know, when you talk about zero-based budgeting and is, you know, functional in nature, we wanted to spend some time talking about, so when you take a look at pages 36 and 37, for example, those are brand-new pages, we haven't done those before, but we wanted to talk about the functions of the departments. We also wanted to tie those functions to the council's new goals in your strategic plan. And all of that drives it up to the numbers, and you should see those reflected in the budget, okay? And I also, I know the mayor really is interested in us making sure that this budget document is readable to folks. And I will tell you that there's summaries in front of, I believe, every department about the changes in each department, okay? And we, now, we didn't say every dollar, we basically said if there was a change up or down of $30,000 in a particular line item, and you'll find most of those are down, by the way, we've reduced those, it'll be laid out. If you will take a look at page 17 in my memo, all right, seven, pages 17 and 18 in my memo, go through it at a high level and shows you what pages they're from. All right? So, again, trying to make it a readable... So again, trying to make it a readable document for the general public, okay? Go ahead, Ann. I'm sorry.
So each, each department within the general fund is, is presented in a similar fashion. And then the separate tabs for our special revenue, debt service fund. And if, if you can flip real quickly to page 107, 108, you see more details about our debt, the outstanding balances, interest rates, so specifics. And this, this document will end up being a, a resource, you know, in the future if you need to see that information. Then the capital projects. Behind the capital projects, we list each of the projects that are being requested for funding. And under the capital improvement plan tab, we have an opening comment there to call your attention to the fact that we do recognize there are two significant projects that at this time, we didn't have enough information to build into fully into this budget. Although I will mention that there are some dollars associated with these projects within the presented budget. But on page 115, we had our best estimate at some costs and timing. Again, this was just an, an estimate, and we'll know more with the completion of the studies down at the bottom of the page, 115. And it's labeled as funding source to be determined. And those are the kind of dollars, preliminary, best guess.
So where did those come from? Talking to McMahon and people like that, or?
I'll have to defer to, to Mr. Feeney.
Mr. Feeney.
Matt Feeney, for the record, Public Works Director. It's kind of a compilation of guesstimates from McMahon as well as utilizing FDOT's long-range planning numbers.
Okay.
But a heavy reliance on contingency in, in applying contingency to the complexities of each quadrant. Obviously, some areas of, of the quadrant are, would be a little easier to construct in terms of cost because you have some, some fairly open land in, in some areas. And so I kind of adjusted contingency factors throughout the four quadrants and then tried to look at how you would implement it from easiest, starting kind of in the northwest corner and, and working through a, a progression. So it's a little bit of guesswork and a little bit of planning numbers.
And I'm assuming you didn't imply any contributions from other sources here?
No, sir.
Okay.
I was just going to make the point, that's a big question. The contribution will make life a whole lot easier for everybody.
So the four larger fold-out sheets are capital improvement plan. Something else about those sheets, let's, you can flip to the page right behind the one I was just referencing, page 116. Columns at the top do want to point out, there's some information, our actual, as of June 30, 2016, spent on, on each of the projects, our encumbrances as of June 30, 2016. That shows uncommitted budget balance as of June 30, 2016, which generally means if you have by September 30, if there's still unspent budget, that that will be, be considered something that will roll forward. But I also have a column for FY 15, 16, funding on hold. So you will see the dollar amounts that remain. Now, you will not see the amounts that, that were transferred to the downtown project, but you'll see the dollar amounts that are remaining, that are on hold by project.
These are the absolute numbers. They're not, you're saying they're not net of what you moved?
That's correct. It's, it, it excludes what was transferred because the, those, those allocations are no longer there. That funding was transferred. I'm sorry. And then behind other information, well, I'm sorry, behind, behind the big sheets, individual sheets, we can call this Councilman Forbes sheets. Could we use that name for these sheets? These are the sheets that originally were, were designed by Councilman Forbes when we were looking at our CIP projects. And they were used during our budget process as, as requests were made for capital improvement projects. And that has a lot of documentation there. And then behind the other information, we have a listing of items that were brought to our attention that were not included in, in this budget document that we'll want council's discussion and input on.
You're talking about 139?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And just one, so it'd be helpful. So the question Greg asked at the last meeting, when you had the budget transfer, there were certain items that were listed, right? So when you get to this column that's called funding on hold, those are not there? Is that what you're saying?
Right. That, that money is gone.
And they're not in this year's, not in this budget either? They, they haven't been rebudgeted either?
That, that's correct.
All right, well...
For lack of better terms, we've got to refight for them this year if we want them in this year's budget.
That's correct.
Or re-justify, rather. Well, whatever, yeah.
And, and it's just my, one final comment about the book. There's a blue sheet in that very last section. Behind that, documents are zero-based budgeting. It goes through each account and shows the details that were identified to build the amount that's being requested within this budget. And I look forward to next Wednesday.
Thanks for all the hard work.
And, and we get last call, right? If we don't see something on 139 that we thought maybe should have been there, we have a last call till next Wednesday, right?
Certainly, certainly.
All right, all right. Very good. So if you don't see what you like on page 139, team, add, add away, or subtract away, or, well, we'll subtract away later.
Appreciate you.
One, page 139, everybody circle that one because if, that, that'll be things that we've, people have, we've all been approached for things for this year's budget, or we will be. 139 is something to focus on. Okay? Ann, did you have some more?
No, I want to thank you for going through that with me, but I thought it'd be helpful because we did make some changes to the document.
Great.
And hopefully that will help the process as well.
Great, thank you, Ann, very much. Carl, did you have anything to add, or Arlene, or council, anybody? Okay, let's break and we'll resume at 5:00.